All right. Do you want to do roll call?
Sure. Oh, we don't have any members of the public here.
I'm like in Matthew Menard is here.
Oh, my gosh, it's really him. I thought it was like fake news. Okay, let's get started. Welcome to the city of Livingston planning for meeting. Looks like people are getting on, which is good. Let's start with roll call. Misha Hamilton.
Here.
Mike Petrie.
Here.
Taya Cromley.
Here.
Jonathan Hedinger.
Here.
Jim Barrett.
Here.
Shannon Holmes.
I am present.
Stacy Jovic.
Here.
And Jesse Wilcox is here. So I think we are all accounted for. The next item on the agenda, I believe, is public comment. Let me pull it up. Here. Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes from last month?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last month.
Thanks, Taya. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Thanks, Misha. All in favor? I think we can do it that way.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion passes. I'll go through the the whole thing for other things, I think, but this one, I think we can handle. Okay, we'll start out with public comment. Please state your full name and physical address prior to speaking. Please make your comments on something that the planning board has jurisdiction on, and this is general public comment. So do we have anyone who's interested in making public comment this evening? And I'm not seeing anybody. Does anybody see anybody in the? Okay, I'm going to say last call for public comment. Okay, public comment is closed, and we'll move on to new business. Making the recommendation to approve the Trails and Active Transportation Plan. Is there somebody from the city planning department? Is that you, Martha, that wants to kick this off?
Yeah, I guess that is me. So we have Dawn on the line as well to answer any questions. We had posted last week the final draft of the Trails and Active Transportation Plan, and it has incorporated, all of the comments that we received, both from the public and from MDT and from the city. So has everybody had a chance to take a look? And maybe we could talk about it if anyone has any other questions. And if not, if I remember correctly, this board will need to approve it, and this board will need to create a resolution of intent to adopt it and provide that to the commission with a 15 day notice. Does that sound correct? Maybe Shannon, do you know? Or Faith?
I think all we need to do is is just provide a recommendation for approval from Jesse as the chairman, the Madam Chair, excuse me.
So I just have a question as a process, a procedural question. In the past, Matthew would give us the an email with the heads up of, you know, what his staff report was going to be and like that the document was in the final form in advance. And that wasn't noticed on our agenda that where it was. So it'd be helpful if in the future we could have information in advance of the meeting.
Sure. Okay. This is not normally my role, so I guess I wasn't aware of that, but we can definitely do that.
Yeah, thanks.
If I may add, I mean, we're we're in a transition right now. I mean, that left and and it was a two week notice and and I know the jobs advertised, so we're scrambling to keep our heads above water.
Right, right. I guess I just don't every day go to the city website to follow things either. So, I mean, you know, when you're in house, you're there all the time, but when you're not, you're not necessarily watching it as closely as all I was referencing. So.
Yeah, and also, this was, this is a little wonky, and I, and again, it's a transition, you know, the the original agenda that came out didn't have this actually on the on it listed as new business. And then the second one came out yesterday and had it on there. And I think Mike Cardos must have caught it according to, you know, Faith's email. So, you know, we can have this discussion. We'll ask some questions tonight, and if we're ready to make a motion, we can. And if we're not, I guess we can, we can table it till the next meeting if we'd like to. But let's open it up to board questions and comments. And we do have Dawn on the line, too, who gave us a great presentation at our last meeting. So do you guys have any questions for for Dawn or for Martha on on the final draft?
I guess I would like a summary of what the changes were in in general of from the draft presentation to the final, if you could, Dawn.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Stacy. So let's see, in totality, comment wise, Matthew and Martha had provided some, and this is kind of going back even to kind of a cycle when I presented it to you last month. And I know Stacy, you had noted like Star Road spelling and things like that. We've gone in and corrected those. We have a couple of tweaks on the final version, just to make the maps a little bit better. The content itself isn't fair. Our map guy had done a volunteer mission in Guatemala, so he's just getting his feedback under him for that. Some clarifying points from MDT, I think I might have mentioned in the last meeting, just the MDT urban routes versus something like a Park Street or a Highway 10 and getting clarification that the city, for the most part, gets an allocation for the urban routes and has a lot of authority over those. And depending on some functional elements of it, it's it's kind of a formality type thing, but just kind of one of those idiosyncrasies in Montana law and how that works. I think the last time Shannon presented that even within that fund and what was happening there was at least starting the program in the five year CIP, some of the top tier improvements that are there. So that's been really over the last couple, last month to six weeks, the adjustments that have been made.
Well, then I guess I have another kind of procedural catch question as to the section that's on the ordinances and the the, I understand the zoning would be a separate section. But if this plan is adopted as is, there are suggestions in there for ordinance changes. Is that locked in stone if we make a recommendation, or is that something that the city commission just takes these recommendations and then they do something with it? Is that how that works? Whoever can, whoever knows the answer?
Would view it as the latter, you know, this plan is that word, a plan, and where we would define some even some things from a design perspective on projects, that's still contingent upon survey and alignment and and other things to flush out. It's just the ideas. And I would say it's the same thing for policy. I think in an ideal world, as the city updates, that ordinance would incorporate these things in there. But, you know, who knows what issue might come up in a different realm that impacts what's here. So it's kind of that planning level and any implementation from policy changes to project designs come later.
Madam Chair, if I may add, you know, historically, with planning documents like this on the commission agenda, it's typically a discuss, approve, deny, and and the commission accepts that based on what Don's saying, you know, it is a planning document and and we will use it as a planning tool moving forward. And as he's also stated, you know, Martha and I have already generated CIP sheets for some of the projects. So we're already putting that in the budget process, knowing that we have full community support for projects like these.
And just the clarification, what's a CIP?
A capital improvement plan.
So all of the, all of the ordinances that they that are written in here as suggestions for changes just goes to a committee if this was adopted? I mean, that's, these are just their suggestions from the plan to make make things work within our ordinances or to change within our ordinances.
Absolutely. And, you know, the commission, does their due diligence, like I I know they do. They certainly are the policymakers and they can add, request the city manager, add those specific ordinances, city code, whatever revisions to be looked at at a future agenda.
I could to that, we tried to look at the recommended policy changes through the lens of what was both in the growth policy update, as well as just our background knowledge of best practices and tailoring stuff to Livingston context and just, you know, something different than we would recommend and City X or City Y. But any ordinance change would go through the public hearing and other established parameters for that at whatever time that the city moves on those things. I think in an ideal sense, it would be combined with other policy changes stemming from the growth policy update. And then obviously, whatever laws in the state of Montana that might dictate updates confined to twice every year or things like that. So there's some procedure elements of that as well.
Any other board members have comments or questions about the agenda item?
Would you say that the overall feedback from the public was in general, having not seen the the final draft? So I can't speak to what's on there. So favorable, I mean, we've gotten a couple of comments that it was favorable in general. Martha, did you get favorable comments or?
Yep, I've heard a few that are excited that we're doing it. And I've I've actually got a couple emails. I forwarded them to Dawn and Shannon, but they were thinking as though we're actually making a plan and moving forward.
And it seems to me, I think we, as a planning board, received four, maybe four public comment, written public comment. I hope you guys all received those, that we're all in favor. Jonathan, do you have anything you want to add?
I was just gonna say thank you, Dawn, for taking so much time to do this. It's really a great plan and and I really appreciate all the outreach at the Parks and Trails Committee and the Planning Board. And I think it, I mean, I think the amount of support we've heard from it, and then also just everyone listening and being like, wow, that's a great plan. It just shows that it's really working. So thank you. And thanks, Shannon and Martha, for already getting started on it. So I'm really excited about it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Shannon.
Thank you, Jonathan, for not doing what I'm about to do, but I'd like to make a recommendation or that that we, as the planning board, accept this active transportation plan as written and forward that recommendation to the city commission.
A second.
A second by Jonathan. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, let's vote. Misha.
Yay.
Mike.
For.
Taya.
For.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Shannon.
For.
Stacy.
For.
And I am also for. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Dawn. Thank you, Martha and Shannon. I'm really excited. I also really appreciate all of your hard work, and I really enjoyed joining you on some of those bike rides and walks around town. And I'm excited for this plan. So thank you.
Madam Chair, I think if I could say something, I are, we've really enjoyed the time on the ground there. I look forward to coming back there and hiking and seeing it. And I would also say this. Take time to celebrate your successes when projects get done. It's not a small feat for a town of your size to be able to do those things. It's not a small feat to begin programming stuff and do things like a celebratory bike ride or a bike parade or something goofy to have that ribbon cutting when it's done, because these are notable things, and it's truly implementation of things that have stemmed from all the parks and trails work at the county and city level, the growth policy update, and and be mindful of that and know that from our work in a lot of places, you know, we like to see the implementation stuff, too, because to be able to say we did a plan and they started programming stuff immediately, that means it's not collecting industrial levels of dust like some things can. So that, to us, is probably the most meaningful thing aside from the other good feedback we've received. So yeah, it's been something we've really enjoyed and hope to be back there to explore the implementation of it at some point.
Awesome. Thank you. Very good advice. We all like to celebrate.
Madam Chair.
You're right. It's no small feat. Yes, Jim.
I just wanted to clarify, is the accepting that map and by reference, is that included in this by accepting this plan or passing it on? We're asking the city commission to, I forget the term.
Adopt the plan.
Adopt the map at by reference? Is that in?
Correct, because the map is a part of the plan. Yeah. So yes, the active transportation map, what was the name of it? The one we discussed?
Yes.
In detail. Yes.
The Trails one is really the key one there because it, you know, defines intent, so it can put you in the position when a development comes in and it's adjacent to or within an alignment. If it's a doc, if the map is adopted by reference, you have the legal nexus to require that, but also just adopting the map by reference instead of a year allows you to amend that map if new information becomes available, and it's just a reference to the official map and that can change. So process wise, I think that's something for you to keep your eyes on as it moves through.
Okay. Does that help, Jim?
I think so, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dawn. All right. Let me just get back to my agenda here. Okay, all business is none. Administrative comments, Public Works update. Shannon, what do you have for us?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I will start by saying the the city commission has been very supportive in moving projects forward. At our last meeting, I had quite an extensive list, and these last two commission meetings, we've gotten a lot of contracts passed by the commission, and one of those is the Sixth Seventh Street Water Project, the Stormwater PER and designed for the Green Acres Montag Sewer Extension Project. So that was done the first meeting in March. We did provide the commission last night a an update and PowerPoint on the Green Acres PER and and we're all crossing our fingers that we get the $2 million ARPA grant, and hopefully we find out about that in the next month or so. Some other things that we're working on, continuing to meet with the school district and and look at extending sewer to the civic center and ultimately Sacagawea Park and the Miles Park bathrooms. Working with the View Vista community on a preliminary engineering report to extend water and sewer into that development. And those that maybe are familiar with that part of town, we had a water service break here a couple of weeks ago on a Sunday. So obviously, the infrastructure in View Vista Trailer Park is at or over its useful life. So happy to be working with them on that. Martha has done site plan approval, excuse me, for FedEx, Starbucks, and those projects are getting started. We recently, our contractor has completed work on at least the initial phase of our of our tree project. We're about 40 trees citywide have been removed and stumps grinded, and now we're waiting on a planting come May or June. We've been working with Park County Environmental Council on a Boulevard Tree Program that I think is between 50 and 60 trees. So that's exciting. And they're looking at using the Americor volunteers to help start those plantings in May. We received a grant for a tree inventory update, so I'm working on a request for proposals for doing that. The Parks and Trails Committees reached out about some of our capital improvement projects, and one in particular, I just wanted to update this because it's pertinent to our discussion tonight, is we have been working with the developer up at Tri-Tip on getting the Bitterroot Trail restored. And we hope that that work will start sometime here in in early April. Now, it's a little more spring like than winter like. Internally, we've been doing a lot of professional development. We've had a group, our safety committee, go through some OSHA training the last couple of days. So happy to do some professional development now that things are loosening back up with the pandemic. And then I wouldn't be doing myself any justice if I didn't mention to this group, we're really struggling at the water reclamation facility. We've now lost two staff members there in in the last in the last month. And we're really struggling with hiring people due to lack of housing or excessive high cost of housing. And I'm really, we're trying to turn every stone to keep Chuck and Heath down there and keep the facility operating, but we're we're really challenged right now with our housing crisis in Livingston with with hiring good qualified people. And that is all I have, and be happy to answer any questions.
Didn't we say, oh, Jesse?
I don't know. Go ahead, Stacy. I was just gonna see if anybody has any questions. So go for it.
What, where are you with the the extension of the Discovery Vista? We were told that that was something that was going to be potentially a springtime, something that would come before us or or not?
Yep. So, you know, again, that's probably a little more on the planning side at this stage, although, you know, Martha and I have been talking with their consultant on water sewer extension, street, stormwater. It's my understanding that they have put in the app their subdivision application. So I think due to the timing of this meeting, it it didn't make the the cut, but I expect that to be on the April meeting. So and then it does not sound like North Town is that far behind Discovery Vista. So we may, there's a possibility we could see those back to back or even concurrently. So.
Shannon, do you have any update on subdivision out near PFL? We've kind of been hearing about that.
So there, you know, there's been a lot of prospecting and development around Livingston. There's been at least three prospective developers looking at, say, the Jessen property. But nothing has been to a formal process yet. I think a lot, there's a lot of due diligence on what the city's requirements are, what, you know, utility extensions, what what our process is, but it's really began and ended at that point.
Thank you.
And for our newer members, the Jessen property is located where?
Well, it is, I would say it's near, just due west of the the interchange out at PFL. I think there's almost 40, 42 acres that's been annexed into the city.
It's across Highway 10, Shannon. Is it on the opposite side of Highway 10?
It'd be on the opposite side of PFL, the southwest, yeah, west side.
And it parallels the interstate?
Yeah, half a mile or so.
But that whole side is basically the Justin property?
I think it's, if you look at the city zoning map, it's it's on there pretty obviously. You know, we do. So I know from a zoning perspective, there's a lot of the new annexations that we've brought into the city this last year, all going through the zoning process. And I know the Laren property was the most recent annexed parcel. And we expect there to be some development plans for that property in the near future.
Will you remind us where the Laren property is, Shannon?
That is on Love's Lane, and it's the property directly west of where the Eagles Landing condo development is at. And the, I would say the west boundary is Miller Drive.
Got it. Okay. And I might just have, this is a kind of a question I have not done a subdivision review yet. Does the developer review those plans with us, or is that something city staff does? What's the process there as far as getting those approved?
So I appreciate you bringing that up. I actually was going to send you an email tomorrow, and I think it would be great if you have time the week of the 28th to possibly sit down with Jim Woodhall and I and and get you up to speed on what the Discovery Vista application is in the process, so you are comfortable as the Madam Chair moving forward in that process. So.
Okay, great. Please send me that email. I'd be happy to do that. I'd appreciate that, just so I am able to navigate that well.
And and Jesse, I'd like to point out that none of us have done a subdivision review. So we had that one meeting with Matthew on subdivision, and that was it.
Yeah.
So we're all all in the same boat as far as feeling like what how how to approach it and what do we need to do before a meeting in order to feel like we can make informed decisions or ask questions? So just keep that in mind. None of us know.
Thanks, Stacy. And then, yeah, I guess, and maybe, you know, I realize it would be a long shot for you to have a replacement for Matthew by then. However, I'm just curious, and maybe Martha or or Faith, who sent us information this time, what kind of information comes to us so that we can do our homework prior to the meeting where we do a review?
Well, Shannon, do you want to take this or?
Why don't you take a stab at it, and I can fill in if needed.
So Matthew, I was helping him a little bit with the subdivision application process, and because the city didn't really have one. And we had a little bit of one, but a lot of people are slipping through the cracks and getting away with things. So they need to submit a full application, and we'll need to see. We'll review, Public Works will review it for water, sewer, garbage, storm, streets, access, fire, that kind of stuff, planning, planning reviews it for zoning, making sure the lots are appropriate sizes, big enough to support housing and meet the zoning requirements. What are we missing, Shannon?
But all I would add is that, you know, state law pretty much dictates the process, and there will be a staff report that Jim will put together, and it will go through all the 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 requirements based on state law. the requirements based on state law and and our, in our, in our city process as well.
Okay.
And and I, and I apologize, sorry if I interrupt, but, you know, I Discovery Vista is probably going to be a good first one, just because there have been previous phases. And this would just be an extension to that. So it should be a fairly straightforward process, but obviously we've had an updated growth policy and we have new members on the planning board, but it's, it's gonna be, it's already, it's an existing development that's doing basically a future phase, but they need to go through this process in order to do that.
Okay. And I guess that was sort of, so zoning in lot size, sounds like zoning commission, but but maybe that's us. I'll look through the PowerPoint slide that Matthew went through with us as a group and and actually perhaps that would be helpful for Misha, Mike, and Jonathan, and probably even Jim, because I don't think any of you got, you are, none of you, I don't think were on the board when we got the PowerPoint presentation from Matthew. If you, if it's, I'll look and make sure I have it and then maybe I can, so the way, and Martha, just so you know, and I don't know, Faith wasn't aware of this, I don't have everybody on the board. I don't communicate directly with the planning board. My directive was to communicate with city staff and city staff sends things to the planning board. So I'm happy to either send that PowerPoint slide to you and you can send it to the full board or I'm happy to send it to Faith and Faith can send it to the full board. I just don't, I don't directly send anything to all these guys. Just as an effect.
Let's send it to Faith. I'll help, I'll help where I can, but I think we need to internally figure out how we're going to do this until we have a, a new planner.
Yeah, no worries. I'll send it to Faith and then the whole board can have that PowerPoint presentation. And then I guess my other question about the subdivision review process would be if, you know, comparing that to the growth policy, which you said, which as you mentioned, Shannon, is somewhat new or or it's been adopted and now this is our first review of a subdivision. So is that something city staff would identify prior to it coming to the planning board? Whether the subdivision is in compliance with the growth policy or has followed the recommendations of the growth policy, or is that something we would have to do some digging on?
So you know, very little of the growth policy recommendations have been made into policy. So we're, we are going to have to use the existing subdivision regulations that we have currently and follow that process.
Okay. What's the process of updating policies that are in the growth policy? To make sure that when we do a subdivision review, it will reflect those recommendations?
So I, you know, obviously, the, the City Commission dictates policy changes and it's really up to their purview on the priorities and timelines based on city administration work, available workload.
Okay, capacity of staff. Is that something that the planning board would put on the commission's radar? Like, hey, we're getting a bunch of subdivision reviews. Does anybody, you know, do you guys think you might want to take a look at these policies?
So I, I can tell you and I we're in the process of updating the whole subdivision regulation. That has started with Matthew. It's been handed over to to Jim. Courtney's involved as the city attorney. Mike has reviewed those. It's, and Martha and my lap as well as far as public works related things. And, you know, fortunately, we have the Public Works Design Standards and specification policy. So there's a lot of just references to that document. So I, you know, I don't want to speak for the city manager because he's, but I can just tell you, everybody, that that we're working on updating those subdivision regs.
Perfect. Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Shannon about his update or? Okay. Oh, okay.
I was just thinking that presentation that Matthew gave, there, there's probably a recording of it, right? Since we were on Zoom.
Yep, and it was the June or July meeting, I think.
I know, I remember.
I have, I just gave the annual report to the commission last night, which was fairly weak, sorry. I just got back from vacation and was like, oh, gosh, okay. But I, it's in my report. So I think it's June. I'll look real quick while the planning department gives their update. Do we have somebody from the planning department to give their update, planning, planning update?
You said somebody?
I, that, that would, you know, since Martha and I are city staffers, we didn't think it was necessary for Jim to be on as well. We were hopefully confident that we could cover the basis, but I, I think I covered what, what's, what, I mean, we work with Jim closely. We, we know that the Discovery Vista subdivision app is been submitted, so that's probably his priority right now. And again, the subdivision reg update and and dealing with a lot of the developments in town as well, so.
And I have a question. What is a cutoff date for the, the Matthew's position? You know, is there, you have applications for that? Can you give us an update on that?
I, well, I'm not HR, Stacy, but I know it's open until it's filled and it's.
I just didn't know if there was a date.
Yeah, no, I, you know, it was, it was advertised, I think, the day that, that Matthew gave his notice. And again, I think we're in the same position that we are with the water reclamation facility and other city positions or even private business job opportunities right now. I mean, the housing is the, is where the rubber meets the road, unfortunately.
Okay. I don't know where that is. All right, I'll have to, I'll have to dig around. Oops. Um, okay. What else is on our agenda? Any other board comments before we wrap it up for the evening?
Like to welcome our new, new member.
Misha?
Welcome. Me? Oh, thank you. I'm excited to be here. Sounds like lots gonna be going on.
Get ready, hold on to your hat.
This is the lull before the storm.
That's good.
It's kind of the way this, this board seems to be. You, you do a lot in a small concentrated time and then you don't have much. And then all of a sudden, it all comes up again. So welcome.
Thank you.
And I should say, I did give the annual report to the City Commission last night and they were very complimentary of the planning board. They gave us some claps and said, very good job. So well done to those of us who went through that process. And I let them know that we're, we built some really great camaraderie and we're looking forward to moving forward with all the new things that come our way. So thanks for all your dedication in 2021, planning board members.
Giving the report.
Short and sweet. Yes, Shannon.
I was just curious with just the the pandemic and where we're at in our community, or do we want to have a discussion on looking at going back to in-person meetings at some point in the next few months, or how would you like to handle that? Because maybe with a subdivision review, it may be beneficial to all be in a room if in socially distanced or do whatever we feel is comfortable, but it may be better to do it in that fashion.
Yeah, and you know, Shannon, I asked that question of Faith, you know, what, what the plan was, kind of curious about that. And then I don't know if we I guess, I guess we can gauge our comfort level as a board, but I, I'm assuming it's up to the city manager, maybe as to whether or the commission, they're still virtual. Can we make that decision or do they sort of let us know when we are expected to come back in person?
That may be just a good question to reach out to Mike about. I mean, I, I think it, maybe at this point, it's just the comfortability of all the members. You know, certainly could play a role. But I'm not sure if there's, is, that there's a citywide policy right now that everything is virtual. I, I know, I know the commission wants that for the, for their meetings, but I'm not sure if that's a standard across all the other boards. It's my understanding that some of the other boards have been meeting in person, but maybe even in an outdoor setting and if the weather's nice.
Let's do a subdivision review at Sacagawea Park.
I'd like to, if we can, keep them hybrid at least, because it's been really great to have so much participation in the meetings. And I think it's just really nice to have that virtual option for people.
And I agree with, with Jonathan that a hybrid is, is nice to have. And I think Matthew was looking into whether the city could figure out how to do hybrids. I don't know where that ever went, or, you know, it was, it became more complicated than what we thought it could be such a simple thing, but it's not apparently. So I know one time we did have our one meeting in person and Melissa had to call in. But I don't know if that was just a different way of doing a, a meeting if you couldn't be there in person. So I don't, I don't know. I'd be interested in knowing where we are with that option.
Well, I will say this, and, you know, interestingly enough, the county can do it in the community room in the county building. However, that's the county's go meet platform. Because I've held hybrid meetings in there for the county. I don't think the city shares the county's go meet platform. So the last time they did try to do something hybrid-like was for the governance training with the guy from MSU. And it was kind of a disaster because those of us who are watching the live stream, I guess, couldn't hear anything the guy was saying, really. It was very difficult to understand. So I know they tried it and that was, I don't know, maybe right before the holidays or maybe right after the holidays, maybe. I don't know. So I can ask Faith, you know, I do agree with you guys that I think that we get a lot better participation when these things are held virtually or there's a virtual option. I feel that way about the commission meeting because when those went to in-person, I couldn't, I couldn't attend because I do, I listen over dinner, you know, making dinner. So I'll ask Faith what the options are moving forward. But I do question whether a subdivision review might be better in person, given it's our first one. And I'm not, I'm not quite sure what kind of, you know, things we'll need to look at or if it's easier to to navigate that. Will we have planning board staff who can pull that, you know, Mike, Matthew used to pull the maps up and we would go through and look at stuff. And I don't know if I have access to that kind of thing to be able to do that. So I guess I have some questions, but I'm going to meet with Shannon and Jim before our next meeting and I'll make sure to have a conversation with Faith about a hybrid option. I guess my question would be, before we kind of adjourn, does anybody have any COVID reasons, like comfort level reasons as to why you wouldn't want to be in person or is it more public? And if you're not comfortable answering that, I guess you don't have to. But I mean, would people be comfortable meeting in person? And we can maybe thumbs up, thumbs down.
I was just gonna chime in and echo Shannon's sentiment. We've done subdivision review on Zoom for the county and it is hard. It's harder. I think it's, there's a lot of documents and information to take in.
Okay.
And I, I think that was just if, if you were going to be or getting the public, you know, maybe this one specific one can't be, but or if you're going to be at a town to get on a Zoom, that's it. It's, it's just a nice feature to not miss a, a meeting.
Okay.
If you wanted to.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Jim?
I think it's probably, we could meet with our social distancing like we did last fall. But if there's a crowd decides to show up in the community room or wherever we do this, that could be something to think about. But I think certainly we could meet and go over the plans.
Yeah. Okay, it just has to be public. So we would have to be able to, to livestream the meeting and be able to take public comment via that stream. So why don't we do this? Why don't we, I'll, I'll check with Faith, see if there is a hybrid option. And then try and figure out how to communicate, you know, have her communicate back to the board what the decision is, I guess. And with a concern about the crowd. Does anybody else have any thoughts or comments about that? Okay. Um, I think that's a wrap. Our next meeting is April twentieth. TBD whether we're in person or Zooming. And I am going to adjourn the meeting this evening at six twenty-one. Thank you all very much.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Good to see everybody.
All right, thank you. Have a great night.
Good evening.
All right.